So we'll have Peter and Darlene give us the presentation and then we'll move forward from there. Go ahead.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and staff and members of the public who may be watching at home. Peter and I are here this evening to present the 10-year water financial plan for the distribution system. And I'm going to do the front-end introduction part and Peter's going to do all the money finance parts. So first, a bit of the background. I know I was here back in February talking about the quality management system and operational plan, so I won't spend a lot of time. Basically, our drinking water works permit and our municipal drinking water license expire in September. Our legislative renewal deadline is next Tuesday, April the 23rd. And to submit our renewal application, we need to have an operational plan that's been approved by Mayor and Council. That was back in February. We have to have an accredited operating authority and our operating authority was accredited by QMI SI Global in 2016, so that is still valid. And what we're here to talk about today is we need an approved financial plan to submit with our application for renewal. So the financial plan is under Regulation 450-307. This actually states what we have to include in our financial plan. And it mandates that drinking water system owners have to develop and endorse a financially viable and sustainable financial plan for the drinking water system. And it has to cover six years. Because our license and permit are good for five years, basically, the first year of your financial plan is the year you apply and then it has to extend five years past. As mentioned, our previous plan was for 10 years and we're proposing a 10-year plan again this evening. And it is also required under Schedule B, Condition 8 of our drinking water license that we have the plan. So what do we mean by sustainable? According to the regulation, we need to be able to achieve financial viability of our system and we need to provide safe drinking water in the short term and in the long term. And that includes long-term planning for capital replacements and renewals. At minimum, we have to maintain our current service levels and of course, prepare for any additional regulations. From the Catherine Street project in 2010, and unfortunately, construction does represent an inconvenience to our constituents and to our visitors. We do have to tear up roads, make a big mess everywhere, but we do have to invest in our system and I'm going to show some examples of why. So there are some consequences of underfunding your drinking water system. With respect to this, Justice O'Connor in the Walkerton Inquiry stated that municipalities need to ensure that their water systems are adequately financed. Over the long term, safety depends on stable and adequate financing to maintain the water system's infrastructure and its operational capacity to supply high-quality water consistently. Without adequate resources, corners will inevitably be cut, whether in the day-to-day operation of the facility or in its long-term capital infrastructure. Ultimately, the safety of the drinking water system would be jeopardized. Infrastructure underfunding is not unique to Port Colborne. This is a provincial and even a national phenomenon. Infrastructure is not being reinvested at a sustainable rate in North America-wide. Port Colborne isn't too badly off. Over 50% of our drinking water system is PVC and is newer. We still have about 40% of our system that is, that needs to be updated. Roughly 80% of that 40 is cast iron or ductile iron water mains. The water mains that we're going to replace on Janet Street and Carter Street this year are cast iron that were installed in the 60s and 70s. Additional consequences, you do end up with older infrastructure. The valve on the left is from the water main project in 2010 and there was actually a hole in the bottom of it when they took it out and it was installed in the 1940s. Next to it is, was actually during the sewer project in the 2000s. And while they were replacing the sewer, the water main next to it broke twice in an hour. So a lot of times, a lot of our infrastructure is only for one buried infrastructure as opposed to both, and in some cases, it does have impacts on the one next to it. Of course, the most serious consequence of underfunding is health effects. North Battleford, Saskatchewan, there was a waterborne cryptosporidium outbreak. There was a cryptosporidium outbreak in Collingwood and of course, Walkerton. We can't think that because we're not responsible for the actual treatment plant, that we are immune from having contamination in our system. A recent study from the National Research Council in the U.S. indicates that a substantial proportion of waterborne disease outbreaks originate through contamination of the distribution system. Even though incidents of waterborne disease are decreasing overall, the ones that do occur are frequently originating in the distribution system. Most of the documented cases of waterborne diseases attributed to the distribution system have been caused by breaches in the physical integrity. So water main breaks during water main replacement projects and even backflow events. So it is important to make sure that everything's done in a sanitary manner and that more updated the system is, the less chance there are for outbreaks to occur. Dr. Harudia, professor at the University of Alberta on the 10th anniversary of Walkerton, and it's important to realize Walkerton has been almost 20 years ago now at this point, he commented on Canadians' attitudes towards paying for drinking water. He said that we've gotten used to the idea that drinking water outbreaks are rare, so why should we care? And he said, "We understand that if you don't pay for cable, we can't watch TV, but Canadians don't equate their cable bill with their water bill." Also, on the anniversary of the tragedy, Bruce Davidson, a Walkerton resident and advocate, stated, "I don't think people think about being a senior citizen under a boil water advisory, where the only way you can get water to your upstairs bathroom is to lift a jug of water up the stairs, one step at a time." Also, from the Walkerton Inquiry, recommendation 45 was that given that the safety of drinking water is essential for public health, those who discharge the oversight responsibilities of the municipality should be held to a statutory standard of care. This was Justice O'Connor's solution to underfunding was to make this recommendation. And I know I've presented the standard of care to you before, so I'm not going to belabor the point, but ultimately, the safety of the drinking water is the owner's responsibility. You can rely on staff, you can rely on experts, but ultimately, Council and Mayor are the ones that decide what funding we get and permit which projects we're going to do. So Justice O'Connor's rationale for the requirement for a financial plan was that as a general principle, municipalities should plan to raise adequate resources for their water systems from local revenue sources, barring exceptional circumstances. He also went on to say that since municipalities own their water system and are accountable for the delivery of water services, and since the benefits of water services overwhelmingly go to local consumers, it is appropriate to expect municipalities to pay for the cost of their water system from local revenue sources. With respect to affordability. (Audio cuts out.) For the same cost as a bottle of spring water, which in 2002 was approximately $1.25, bought at the store, consumers receive several thousand glasses of water. There appears to be room for water rates to rise in cases where consumers are not paying for the full cost of safe water. Now, $1.25 is from 2002, but I have some slides that show how the affordability of our water compares today to these items. So in Port Colborne, these are prices I picked up off on Friday off the Internet. So the average monthly cost for a resident here in Port Colborne for electricity is about $116 a month on average. Natural gas is around $73. The Internet, and this is from a Canadian study for prices across the country, is about $79 a month. Our sewer charges, and that's for about 22,500 liters of sewage treatment, 22.5 cubic meters, is just under $72. A basic telephone with no long distance on it, just your basic phone, is around $51 a month. Your water is, again, for 22,500 liters, is just over $61 a month. Cell phone, basic cell phone, no data, $40 a month. And because of the CRTC regulations in 2016, your cable and satellite, you can get skinny basic for $25 a month. Now, I know water and sewer, we have, normally our bills are together, and if they were together, that would be the top of the list for a monthly fee, but because this is the water financial plan and we cannot consider sewer during this plan, just water, that's why I have them broken out. Just to compare price per liter, I put some common beverages in our per-liter charge. A liter of wine, and that is Ontario VQA wine, is about $18.65 a liter. Or if you had to have a cubic meter of wine, which is 1,000 liters, it'd cost you $18,650. Beer, again, just a domestic case of beer, $5.04 a liter, or $5,040 per cubic meter. Coffee, again, our standard local coffee shop, $4.28 a liter, or $4,280 a cubic meter. Bottled water, just a one-liter bottle, $1.99 a liter, or $1,990 a cubic meter. And gasoline, this was Friday's price, I'm not sure what the price was today. It was $1.15 a liter on Friday, or $1,150 for a cubic meter. So going down to the list, you'll see at the very, very bottom is your sewer charges and your water charges. And this is our 2019 rates and that includes the fixed charges. It's not just the consumption charge, it includes the fixed charges. So on an average month, a liter of water, just water, is .0027 or less than a penny, a twentieth of a penny. Sewer is .0032 for a liter. So your average cost per cubic meter of water in Port Colborne with your fixed charges is $2.70 for 1,000 liters. And your sewer is $3.20. So for less than $6, you get 1,000 liters of water. And there's nothing else on this list that's $6 for 1,000 liters. So again, we did some research and we looked at the median household income according to the 2016 census. And according to industry best practices, your water should be no more, water and sewer together should be no more than 4% of median household income. So in Port Colborne in 2016, the median household income was just over $57,000. The annual wastewater bill in 2019 rates with your fixed charges and consumption is $1,615 for the year or 2.81% of our median household income. Our neighboring municipalities, Wellington and Fort Erie, their median household incomes are fairly similar and their percentage of median household income for water and sewer is just a little bit higher, 2.86 and 3.07%. So you can see that water is very affordable in Port Colborne. And I'll pass it over to Peter for his part.
Okay, now the exciting part of the moment of this evening, talk about money again. So the financial plan, worked on the financial plan, worked on 10-year plan, and basically was established with a base year of 2019, which is the water budget that Council just passed. And with that said, there's three components of the water financial plans. The operating plan, which is the operating expenses, capital costs, debt management. It's also, and that includes the funding plan, which is the other side of the equation, which is the revenue, where we get our revenue from, which you know is the usage or volume rates and the fixed charges, and any new debt that may apply for any new capital construction projects. And together, that becomes your financial plan with projected financial statements of the city's water system. Available, achieving financial viability is what Darlene had mentioned, and that's a combination of cash inflow, so cash coming in and cash going out. So the operating cash flow includes both projected access of revenues over expenses and the allocations, any allocations to debt reserves, capital contributions, which may not be expended in any particular year. Financing transactions include the proceeds from new debt, which we've seen in the past, and the repayment of that long-term debt each year plus interest. And we do have that in the water system. Capital transactions include the purchase of new capital assets, so all your water mains, your water hydrants and so on. And the balance, any balance of cash at the end of each year would be monies that would be available for future capital expenditures. So basically, that is sort of the flow of how the water financial plan takes effect. So the operating plan is there to provide safe drinking water in the short and the long term. And as I mentioned, includes the operating expenses, capital costs, and debt management. So going further, the operating plan, so the projection from 2019's base budget to 2029, the operating expenses are projected to be around $5.1 million in 2029 over the next 10 years. These operating expenses exclude the capital components, the allocations to reserves, any debt that we may be paying for debt interest, and they are approximately, they're going to approximately be anywhere between 3.9 million next year to 5.1 million in 2029. The operating costs are projected to increase by 3.6% in 2020, 3.9% in 2022, and 4.2% in 2027. The balance of the years are about 2.7%, so under 3% increase. So we're looking anywhere between 3% and 4%, but the majority of the ending part of the years would be around 3%. The reason for some of the larger increases in the earlier years is due to staff increases, which are proposed. And in 2020, it's being proposed that a summer student be brought on. And it will also cover the balance of the six months of the water operator that we approved in 2019. So if you remember, we cut the budget a bit in 2019 because we weren't hiring the water operator until halfway through this year. So in 2020, we have to pick up the balance of that staff person. With that said, in addition, in 2021, we're looking at adding a temporary water operator and that would be similar to our Parks Temp and our Roads Temp, temporary person, and that would be from April 1st to October 31st. So that's included in this budget or in this forecast. And there's an addition of another water operator in 2022 and in 2027, and that's anticipation of continued changes in legislation. When we're looking at the operating plan and this five-year plan, the one thing I have to remember is that it is a forecast. Each year, the water budget will be coming back to this council, so this is not engraved in stone. It's a projection of where we think we're going into the future. And each year, the water budget we've brought forward to this council and depending on the circumstances of that particular, sorry, that particular year, will entail as to how a budget is passed for the current year, so for 2020, for example. Water purchases, water purchases again are from the Niagara region and historically make up about 50% of the total annual operating costs. And we're predicting that they will go be anywhere between 2.8 to 3 million cubic meters going forward. The estimated unbilled or unaccounted-for, as you say, water purchases are set in this particular budget anywhere from 35% to 38%. And Chris is going to speak to that at the end of this presentation as to where we're going to make that number better. In addition, operating expenses are increased anywhere between 2% and 3% over the 10-year With regard to capital costs, so capital costs, as you see in the graph, there's, majority of the costs are for water main replacements. We do have in 2020, the estimated replacement of the bulk water station at the, by the animal shelter. And then also, there's, in the orange, you'll see some replacements for fleet and equipment, so vehicles and equipment, and then some small replacements of fire hydrants over the years. And in 2019, you see that there's the water meters that we're going to be replacing, which is, we're putting in place, which are the industrial water meter pits. The plan does accelerate the city's water main replacement program by increasing the annual capital expenditures to $750,000 in 2020 and increasing over the 10 years to about $900,000 in 2029. So you'll see the progression of the funding that would be going into replacement of the water infrastructure. Some significant capital costs, so as you can see by this chart, it shows basically where the different types of water mains that we do have in material and the life expectancy of those capital costs. So significant capital infrastructure investments are required over the next 10 years to address our infrastructure deficit, which we talked about at the budget. Over 36 kilometers of water mains are well past their life expectancy and based on industry standards, with another two kilometers of water mains reaching their life expectancy in the next 10 years. At 2019 prices, that equates to about $36 million. We know we can't do that over a 10-year period, but we are slowly looking at increasing the funding that available so that it is affordable for the ratepayers and also being able to tackle some of the replacements of the water mains. As an aging infrastructure is replaced, cost savings in the form of reducing the unbilled and unaccounted-for water and reducing the number of water main breaks will be realized. So these monies can be directed towards additional water main replacements over the years and accelerating the replacement rate and further decreasing operational costs over time. With regard to cash expenditures, this includes the operating expenses and includes the debt that we do currently have and repayment of that debt, increasing capital costs and our working capital. So you can see in the blue where that is our operating expenses going up over the 10-year period. And our debt, you can see our debt payments are decreasing, that's the orange, yeah, the orange, you can see that decreasing over the time period. And that assumes basically no new debt in the next 10 years, that we're able to replace our water mains and our capital infrastructure through the funds that we're generating through the rate structure. Right now, we have, as of January 1st, we'll have about $2.9 million in debt existing still. And for the past water projects, the debt will decrease to approximately $678,000 by 2029 with no new debt. The principal payments and interest costs in this debt are approximately $364,000. And we have debentures that are maturing in 2025 and 2027, bringing the debt costs down to about $143,000. And then we have our last debt is maturing in 2019. So as a debenture matures, as we saw in 2019, which was $70,000, it's allocated to a debt reserve for future debt servicing for new capital infrastructure. Therefore, the debt reserve is available to fund future debt incurred for capital projects and/or directly fund capital projects. So with that, what the funding plan is, are our options to fund those cash expenditures. So we've gone over what our operating expenses are, where we're going with those, our capital infrastructure. So operating revenues are based on increased consumption. If we do have increased consumption, but over the years, we've seen that reduce over the last number of years. Obviously, increased water rates, new debt for new capital infrastructure, or we defer capital costs and look for cost savings. So our water sales, with regard to our water sales, we could see that our consumption has gone down quite a bit in the water sales, but you'll notice in 2013, 2016, there were anomalies. One was high, one was really low, so it was sort of out of the norm. So what we've done is looked at sort of the trend, 2017, 2018, we've sort of had an increase in sales. And with that, the trend that we're looking at is about 1.8 to 1.9 cubic meters of water sales going forward. And the reason for that also is the forecasted, what the trends don't include is the forecast of increases in sales due to installation of water meters at the fire service lines, forecasted production increases at some industrial and commercial facilities that we know are coming onboard, the growth in residential units, and also development on the east side employment lands. So these are all variables that we forecasted to occur during the period of this financial plan over the next 10 years. So our total revenues, this plan does not look at, as I mentioned, any new debt that would be assumed for any projects, but if a larger project did come about, we do have money that we have sitting in, going into debt reserve so that we can increase or debenture some funds in order to put in any major capital projects that may come about. For example, the downtown CIP if something needs to be done there. Revenue levels will gradually increase to allow the water plan to invest in a reserve fund for significant future capital investments and rate stabilization. And financing of future capital costs are based on basically the depreciation or amortization of the assets that we do have, plus we've capital contributions of an additional $200,000 with an annual increase of 2%. And to, in 2023, with an additional $60,000 increase annually, after that to $260,000 in 2029. So we're also, in addition to the capital requirements that we do have, we're increasing that by 200 to $260,000 so that we're increasing the amount of funds that we have available for future capital. So where does that take us on the water rates? So the water rates, you can see they're projected to be 3.4% in 2020, 3.91 in 2021, 3.7 in 2022, 3% in 2023, and then 2.5 to 3% thereafter. And the operating revenues would increase anywhere from 2% to 2.6% to 3, almost 3.5% in 2023. So you can see that our revenue generation is increasing so that we can be sustainable. So again, it's important to note that the projections are in fact, projections. They will be reviewed each year and actually, I'm recommending that probably in three years' time, probably, that the financial plan be reviewed again. And if there are any major changes that have taken place, that then we can always come back to this financial plan, update the financial plan going forward so that we're always using up-to-date information as to what's going on within the municipality on its own. Water rate calculations are based on the projections of revenues expenditures in the plan. Costs have been allocated to both the usage and fixed charges to determine the rates to customers. The costs can be allocated differently between consumption and fixed, although our past practice for the city is to allocate capital costs, capital and debt reserves, debenture costs, and any unbilled water purchases to the annual fixed charge. So that we're, as I mentioned in the last budget meeting, the difference between fixed and variable and majority of our costs are fixed. So what we do have is our annual fixed costs are around that 50% mark. So achieving financial viability, you can see that in the red is our cash receipts, the blue is cash expenditures. So you can see that in the first few years, we're using cash that already exists in our reserves. And then come 2024, you can see that the cash receipts are exceeding our cash expenditures and that's where funds are going into the reserves for capital replacements. So you can see that we're moving in the right direction of having a good positive cash flow. So as planned, it's planned to gradually increase the operating revenues so there's sufficient cash flow to cover expenditures throughout the financial plan. It's projected that new debt will be required for new projects, which may not be part of this financial plan, such as the downtown CIP, as I mentioned before, or any other type of major project that may come up. And any one-time funding and new debt will be accounted for for the new projects, which at this point are not anticipated. Revenues do, the revenues that we are anticipating in this financial plan are covering the costs of our capital infrastructure. Expenses include detailed list of projected expenses, including operating expenses, interest on long-term debt, reserve allocations for debt and capital and amortization. The operating system will allocate unexpended capital funds to the capital reserve as it is the intention of the plan to undertake capital projects every other year. And construction projects will also reduce cash flow in the year in which they are undertaken. And any funds that are not used in any particular year would go into the reserve for future years and future construction. So what does our financial position look like? So you can see that the orange is our debt and the blue is our financial assets, which is basically our, mostly our water capital. And you can see that the, as the debt reduces over the years, our capital assets are increasing over the years to provide us a good financial position. So what else we got here? So what's expected? The achievements of the financial plan are to maintain service levels, not rely on long-term debt to finance capital projects as the system and the financial plan does provide enough funds for capital projects, provide a safe drinking water system, achieve full cost recovery, which we are at, and achieve sufficient cash receipts to cover the annual cash expenditures and allow the and allow the investment in capital and debt reserve funds for significant future capital investments and rate stabilization. That's the crux of the whole financial plan. And that will create financial viability for the water financial plan going forward. And again, it would be up to this council on a year-to-year basis to revise that, the budget going forward, which then will revise the financial plan going forward. So in summary, the financial plan is a living document, and it's going to require regular review and update, as I mentioned. And it's the intention of staff to regularly review the plan for internal compliance, performance measurement, adjustment, and revisions if required, and to ensure absolute performance congruent with the OREG 45307 and the Safe Drinking Water Act. So consequently, this plan can be considered to be a work in progress even after its adoption tonight. So we're looking for council to adopt this financial plan. And again, it's not a plan that's written in stone, it is a plan that is flexible and will be flexible on a year-to-year basis going forward. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris, just to give an update on the types of things that are being done right now to improve the water financial system.
Questions if you first.
I don't think so, do they?
Oh, wait, he may answer while you're talking.
You're so hopeful, Peter. Well, since water's on everybody's mind this evening, I wanted to take this opportunity at the end of everything to sort of give you an update on what staff has been doing. We realize that water and water rates in particular are a hot topic as far as all of council is concerned, and we wanted to reassure everybody on council that it's also a very important issue with all of my staff. We've had a number of successes in the last few months, which I'd like to bring forward, some of the numbers and details on that, and I will allude to those. Just as an example, in the past three or four months now, we have located and done repairs on 26 curb stops slash services to homes. And in that process, and it should be noted that all of those leaks and repairs have been found on the homeowner's side. We've replaced and done repair work, through investigations on eight hydrants that we found that needed work, those have been subsequently repaired. And we've also, a very ambitious program on staff's part, is that we are able to complete one-third of our quota for valve turning this season already. And the positive side to that is, and not just in turning those valves, but we're also checking for leaks, and if we do come across any, then those are being repaired as we find them. So those are all positive actions that staff has been undertaking. We've also done a rethink within-house and addressed our water main flushing program. And currently, we've reduced our monthly consumption through this program by in excess of 7,000 cubic meters a month, which is approximately 1.5 million gallons, for those who don't speak in metric. We've done this with a great deal of credit to staff without having any negative impact on the quality of the water within the system. So we've actually reduced the amount of water we've used in the past to flush the system to make it safe, but still maintain the quality of the system and its function. So that's a huge savings for us as well. We have increased our staff complement, thanks to the funding by council with the budgets, and we should have a full complement onboard by mid-2019, which will be very beneficial in helping us to continue with our maintenance and repair programs as they go forward. There's another thing that we have done in-house, and with the help of the communications group that's now functioning for the city, we're increasing on a regular, almost hourly basis, the general communications to the public. So when we have any activities going on, work status, the status of the system in general, any maintenance programs, we're communicating those now through the communications office here at City Hall and getting that all over in all the publics, in all the different sources, through Twitter and Facebook and everything else. And we found that to be a very positive influence in the interaction between us and the public. We've done a couple of other initiatives, specifically with training. We've gone into a number of training for staff, and not just for our staff, but we've partnered with a number of other municipalities, Niagara, particularly Fort Erie, Welland, Grimsby, St. Catherine's, Lincoln. And what we've done is we've shared costs on that training with those municipalities. And just in the last few weeks, we've held a number of teaching and learning and instructional sessions at our operations center, which has been a huge benefit to us, as well as all the other municipalities. And we've been doing a lot of, what that does too is it allows staff to network and exchange ideas and thoughts, and what other people are doing, or what worked and what didn't work. So these are some of the other things that we've done moving forward. And also, it's just culminated in the last few days, but over the last month or so, staff's been diligent in trying to determine how we were going to go about finding our leaks. So what we've done is we've invited in a number of professionals in the field of leak detection. We have three current proposals on the table that have been submitted to us with dollars and cents, and we've made a decision as of basically this morning, we're going to be proceeding through with a complete analysis from one of the companies, which will give us a complete sounding of all of our system, including they'll be able to pick up any leaks on private services. They will then be able to correlate those and tell us where those leaks are so that we can get on those right away. And we are also entering into a pilot program with a company called Mueller and Ecologics, which are essentially leaders in the industry with regards to leak detection in a number of areas. And they are bringing, I've actually mentioned this to a couple of the councillors and the mayor that have been talking to me on some of the things in the last probably two or three days. But that system, we're going to do a pilot on that for three months. It's actually very unique, it's a new technology, it's only been out for a very short time, and it actually has sounding slash sensing equipment that attaches to the hydrants, and we can do a pilot project with that. And over a month's time, it'll do a sounding on those hydrants and tell if there are any leaks or any indication of a leak within that area. If there is, then we can correlate that and then fix those leaks immediately. And then the intent is to move those through all different sections of the city, and eventually, on an ongoing basis, continue that. So in the proposal that's been given to us, they're going to do the pilot project upfront. It's actually pretty interesting how they do it because it downloads through Bluetooth, the data goes to the cloud, they analyze the data, and they can tell where the leaks are happening, and then they can send us back a report at the end of the month and say, okay, here's where you have to go and look. So this is something we're going to do forward, the intent is. And the really good thing is, is this is all currently covered under existing budgets, so we don't have to come back to council for extra funds. So what you've budgeted for us already, we're going to be covering these expenses with that. And this pilot project, we're looking forward to getting some really interesting results, but it will allow us to continue to monitor system monthly on an ongoing basis for perpetuity, as long as we get funding. What I'd like to, maybe as a special note, I've had staff go through and do some, give me some calculations, because we now have a methodology where we can calculate the volumes of leaks. And five of the most recent leaks that we've investigated and found on private services to homes, they were all on the homeowner's side. And if you, we averaged those five together, they were averaging approximately six cubic meters a day. So we're saving that much daily going forward. And if we had not detected those, that's approximately 2,100 cubic meters a year per service, or almost 450,000 gallons per service. So we've just, in the last five, we've located these, and as I said previously, we've investigated and repaired in excess of 26 of them to date in 2019. So I just wanted to give everybody sort of, not necessarily a report card, but just to give you a sense of where we are with staff and where we're going forward with all of this, and let you know that we are as concerned about water as anybody is. Any questions?
Christopher, I mean, like the nine of us sitting here could say, nothing ever comes fast enough, but boy, is this fast. And through you, Chris, to your staff, and Darlene, Peter on the financial side, staff, they're right here, all three of them that are here this evening. No, I mean, our hats and my hat is off to you guys, because, you know, this is something that is a sticking point with this council, and going forward, we wanted to get this fixed as soon as possible, but I think you're way ahead of a curve that we maybe thought you would be at today. So again, thank you guys, appreciate it, that's super.
Well, I apologize for not coming forward sooner with this, but we've been so busy chasing our tails, so to speak, and trying to cross all the Ts and dot the Is. But we've actually had a chance to huddle and recoup and figure out where we're going with this, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to report on this.
And I don't think we were expecting it to come anytime sooner, it was, we weren't really sure, I mean, originally when we were talking. So no, it is good that you gave us that quarter one report tonight. So with that, questions from council, councillor Bruno.
Thank you, worship. Chris, I just wanted to not only thank you, but in talking to you today about this, I think the icing on the cake is still, I'm wondering if you could tell council if there's sort of 5,500 urban water services here, and I don't know, maybe 1,000 of them are new or been updated. Like, this new company and this technology, how long will it take to get the data on all the urban water line?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruno. Actually, in the first program that we're going to undertake with a company called the Canadian Leak Detections, they have put a proposal on the table for us, they are going to do a complete analysis of our system, and it'll be, if I remember right, it's $20,000. And that will be done in its 20-day period. So they will get back to us then with a complete report on where they have determined where leaks may be, and then my staff can then work on repairing those as soon as possible.
Fantastic.
Great. Councillor?
I had a question, either whether it's Peter or Chris to ask, two things, and they weren't in the large document in the report, but they were kind of in your preamble, Peter, or Chris, in the report. One was, I was concerned that at $750,000 a year now, moving to $900,000, that's no adjustments over the 10 years, just the current plan, after 10 years, using a 2% factor, is really in 2029 still $750,000 worth of buying power. And I would argue that it could be less, because you're looking at 2%, and if your construction cost index was, say, 3 or 3.6, I think it is right now, my concern is, is that that doesn't keep up just with the inflation. So I don't know if one of you's wanted to address that. And further to that, it also doesn't account for, I mean, checking with Chris today, and my memory confirmed from the water rate, is that the capital that we had put aside for this year has been eaten up by the extra we've had to pay for the region. So if you can't, you know, if one of those, or more than one of those events, happens during that 10-year period, it even mitigates negatively to this projection. So I'm wondering why you would have only chosen 2%. I'm not trying to look to see us pay more, but I want to be realistic that we're putting enough at capital. So I don't know if one of you's could speak to the 2% number in the forecast.
Peter?
Three, Mr. Mayor. It's actually anywhere between 2 and 2.5% increase throughout the 10-year period, but it also, that's the $900,000, or $750,000 to $900,000 is the capital component side of that, but it also includes another 200 to $260,000 of, it's sort of a rate stabilization if it's required, if not, it's part of the capital contribution, so it could actually go up to almost $1.2 million in 2029. So that buffer sort of in that rate stabilization component that's in the financial plan.
But is it fair to say, if I could, Mr. Mayor, that, so the 2.60 this year, plus the capital component, was used to pay the region for the excess leaks?
In 2018, is that a year? 2018, there was a small, yes, there was a small component of the capital that, yes, there was no capital works done, and basically balanced the year with the increase in the costs overall, the deficit, basically, the water financial plan. But that is not something that is anticipated to continue, and if it does continue, then we basically have to look at the plan and alter the plan as we move forward.
Okay. And the other one is along the same lines for you or Chris, is if you look at, we're like 3 million cubic meters now stabilized in overall usage, and the plan shows us getting down to, in 10 years, 1.8 to 1.9 in cubic meters. So, you know, you're still at 32, 33% for unaccounted, either unaccounted for or unbilled water, versus now, we're sort of at like 36 from the, 36, 37 from the last meeting. So I'm just wondering, and of course, that doesn't count what you just spoke about, Chris, in the last two months, and it doesn't count for what's going to happen potentially with this leak detection. But the assumptions were based on not that happening, and I'm just concerned that, you know, I think none of us want to see us go from 36 to 33 in 10 years, we want to see it more. So just in that forecast, it just seems rather conservative, and my thought process was, it's conservative because it has to be if you're not spending enough on replacement.
Three, Mr. Mayor, no question, it is conservative. You're not going to want to, and it's conservative on the unbilled being a little higher percentage, and with the assumption also that with the changes that are going to be taking place and the things that the staff are doing, that it will reduce that and reduce the amount of costs that we do have, which means, which will translate into savings within the budget, which will then translate into more capital funds being allocated to infrastructure improvements. So, and that really is the reason why of keeping some of the numbers at the higher level going forward, in the anticipation that those numbers actually will get better throughout the 10-year plan. And again, that's why I had mentioned, probably after three years, two or three years after this plan is in place, and some of the things have been done, some of the numbers then may change, and hopefully will change for the better. And then this plan can be updated again at that point in time, based on the new information that we have, which may change some of the forecasted numbers going forward. And that'll also help in keeping the financial plan more up-to-date as you're going forward, and help in the next time that a 10-year financial plan is due, we may be beyond that, where we'll have another 10-year financial plan, so that we're not at the point of the renewal license coming due at the same time. So this can be changing as we go along, and it should change as we go along. And as I've done over the last 10 years in keeping track, when the budgets are brought forward to this council, in comparing where we are, why we are compared to the financial plan, and how close we are to that financial plan, which over the last 10 years, we were pretty, pretty close to being on, banging on with the 10-year financial plan. Things are changing right now, so this financial plan may not be as bang-on, but that's why I think it will need to be probably reviewed in probably a three, four-year period, maybe even sooner, depending on how fast things change.
Thank you both. I have a real feeling that this finally is a real turnaround this time, so kudos to you both and the staff.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bodnar?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to Chris. Chris, the update you just gave us is fabulous, and it shows things happening and actually things that are done. Do you have a plan to bring this to us quarterly or something, and if you don't, can you? have a plan to bring this to us quarterly or something? And if you don't, can you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bodnar. Yes, that's a new agenda that we have within our group right now that we intend to do. And I promise that we'll even bring bad news if it is. We won't hide that from you. Just as a bit of a summary to what Peter had said, is the intent in all of these numbers, in keeping them at the conservative rate that he's referring to, is essentially that's our worst-case scenario. And if we continue on the path that we hope we can go on, which is what I've spoke to earlier, then those dollars that are in those budgets, that are in those increases, we can use those dollars then to do more replacements and speed that process up. So that's what the intent is.
Counselor Danch?
Sounds like the push is on in water, and that's a great thing. I hate paying the region for something we don't get. I'm not sure if it was, who mentioned it, but like I say, with 36 kilometers of old lines out there and stuff like that, did we kind of fall behind the eight ball there, and we maybe weren't doing what we should have been doing a few years ago? And that's why we still have that much bad lines out there? And now that we've kind of looked at it and said, hey, listen, it's time to get to work and fix these things?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Danch. Actually, our replacement ratios, I guess, compared to some of the other municipalities, not just in Canada or Ontario, but in North America, are actually not that bad. But we, as you pointed out, we still have approximately a third of our, a little over a third of our mains are of the old variety that are due for replacement. The industry standard, I guess you would say, back in the day was, it just wasn't there. And, but this is changing now, because money's, you know, the money is becoming more evident, the cost is becoming more evident. And I think people are just becoming more aware. I think meters were a big push to make things available, and people realizing just what the costs were. Prior to that, we had fixed rates. It was really tough to decide what was going where and how it was getting paid for.
Okay, Counselor? Counselor Borger?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and to staff, in general, whoever can answer this question. In the report, it is stated that 4% of your income going towards water is industry, industry practice or standard. Port is currently at 2.81%, according to the report. With the expected increases for, up to the date of 2029, do we expect to still be at, around that percentage? Or how, are we going to be within the industry standard, essentially is my question? And, yeah, can you respond to that?
Peter?
Sure. Yes, I would, I would say that we would still be in, because our increases that we have going forward are, I believe, pretty reasonable, anywhere between 3 and actually some, in some years, less than 3, 3 to 4%, where you're seeing some of the other municipalities right now are coming in at 8% and 6% in their, their water rates, because they're, I believe they're, they're trying to play catch-up. We've done that. And I think going forward, if we can keep our increases anywhere between 3 and 4%, then I think, and I think you're still going to be within that affordability going forward.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Another question. Peter, you were saying that there's going to be money going to reserve funds? These reserve funds, are they more for immediate projects that'll be coming in the future? Or are we looking, like, how long-term are we looking? Like 30 years? Is it immediate? I'm just curious.
Yeah. The, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the reserve funds are, are basically, we have funds sitting in the reserves right now, which are basically, we budget so many dollars a year. We may not spend all those dollars in any particular year. And what the, the plan has always been is that the engineering department would design one year and then build the next year. So whatever we're designing this year, the funds that we've set aside for capital projects would then be put into the reserve. And so basically, then you have two years of, of funding to do the actual construction in every other year. And if there's projects that are either pushed off or come under budget, whatever, whatever surplus funds are, those will continue to be in the capital reserve. If any major projects do come up that's over and above the annual replacements, for example, building, you know, the east side employment lands, for example, if that, if that, once that comes into, into play and we have to build there, then there's going to be debt that's going to be assumed in order to make sure that those bigger projects get done. So we also have maturing debt that goes into reserves for future infrastructure. So if we have to do major infrastructure projects that's over and above our annual, then we have money into the reserves that would be able to not affect the, the tax or the water rate, but we use those funds in order to pay for the debentures for those particular projects. So those are your reserves also going forward.
Okay, Counselor? Great. Counselor Demery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Peter and Darlene, I just wanted to thank you for putting together a report that was clear, concise. It was very easy to understand. I really do appreciate that part. And it just, it left me without even the ability to raise any questions. So that was a really good thing. And I do thank you for that. Chris, thank you so much for getting on, on these leaks and coming up with some, for what looks to be a good solution. I know it's been a long time coming, and past councils have, have often requested it, but I, the time just wasn't right. It is now, obviously, and I'm really glad to see that moving forward. So again, I thank you, and I look forward to the reports, and no bad news. So I just, I want all the good news, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
Through you, Mayor, to, I have four questions. The first question, I'll continue with, with Eric's lead to, to Peter, if I can. We are, we have a, a practice of utilizing matured debt to help the reserves on this here. And we're looking at $70,000 of matured debt that we're going to put toward our reserve, or in the reserves, and draw out of the reserves for this project or for this plan. And then in 2025, I believe, in 2027, we're looking at more mature debt that's going in there. Is, is there any way we can lock that in? Because obviously, this is a very significant, important plan that we have to put in place to protect our water, to get our water to where we need it, to sustain it, to make it affordable. Is there any way we can lock that, those reserves in now for this plan?
Peter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, they are locked in. So the, the debenture that matured in 2019, so that $70,000 is in the budget, and will go into the reserve every year until we need it, to be, to, to venture another $1 million or $1.2 million, depending on the interest rates at the time, that that $70,000 will pay the debenture or that debt going forward for the next 20 or 30 years, and be able to do a project worth 1 to $1.2 million. When they do mature in the future, again, it's policy of, of this council, that, again, that stays within the budget and continues in the budget. And if we don't use it, it goes into the reserve. And then those funds are, again, available for one of two things. One, to do, accumulate to do a particular project, so it can go into capital, so it can do a water main project, for example. So let's say, five years of $70,000, $350,000, you can add that to the capital program in that particular year, because we haven't debentured yet, to use that $70,000. And when it comes up in 2025 and 2027, then those dollars that I think go up to $200,000,000 would stay in the budget and would be there and locked in, so that we're not reducing the water rates, and we're not increasing the water rates based on that. Those funds would just continue to be there, just like in the general levy, so that, so that you can do those larger projects that may come up in the future, or it will speed up the process of some water main replacements that may need to be done.
And just a clarification, maybe I'm locked in. I, I'm wanting a little bit tighter lock on that one. What I, what I was referring to is, so we have a, a debenture that's been maturing in 2019. I don't know what debenture is maturing. But if, if that was, I don't know, debenture 668-0012, can we not just lock that definitely into the plan, that that debenture is going to be specifically not going into a, a, a large fund, a reserve fund, but specifically go directly to that, to that plan? So that it doesn't, it doesn't get used anywhere else in the future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It won't be used anywhere else, because it's specific to this water plan. It's specific to water. We can't use those for, the, the funds that are raised in the water plan for anything that we would do in the general levy, because it, it's very separate and distinct from the general tax levy funds.
Okay, Counselor?
Perfect. Couple other little questions. One was on the, for Chris, if I may. Chris is doing an excellent job with his staff in regards to getting our own house in shape. I was wondering if there was any intent to go beyond our system into the region's system, because I understand, learned today, that the region does not check their system for leaks. And even though we might have checked our own system and know our own system is not leaking, their system may be leaking? Can we, does that expand into the, the region's leak detection?
Chris?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Wells. Our intent is to get our own house in order first, as you had stated. But we have, we've had some preliminary discussions with regional staff, and we'll have to have continued discussions with them. There are some technologies out there that can be used on these large trunk mains. And we will have to have a further talk with them over time, and see what we can do as far as, not just from the staff's side, but then have them come back to council.
Thank you, Chris. One other question, and I'm not sure if it'll go to Peter or Darlene. Within the report, you made reference to cost savings. Can you put any magnitude to the cost savings that you might, we might expect through this program, through this plan?
Peter?
It was on page six of the report, or page 22 of the package.
Paragraph right under the chart on page six. Yeah, Mayor, that's 16.
I was looking at the actual report, not the plan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council, yeah, through Counselor Wells. Yeah, that statement, yeah, the increase in capital allocations benefits the city by ensuring the infrastructure remains capable of producing water of the highest quality and enables cost savings to be realized. That's based on, perhaps you should have made that a little clearer, the cost of a water main break is about 10 times the cost of replacing an equivalent section of water main. So that's what we meant by cost savings. So if we can reduce, replace infrastructure and reduce the water main breaks, it can actually, in the long-term, reduce our, our operating costs. That's what we meant by that.
Okay. But we can't, we, we haven't put a magnitude to that. We don't have a number that we can assign to that. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All set? Thank you, Counselor. Oh, sorry, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to people that haven't spoken yet. Then I'll go to the people that want to go twice. Counselor Kalyev.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great report, wonderful information. I want to thank you for it. Easy to understand. Nice to be able to explain it to people. I wanted to ask you, Darlene, is there any possibility, can we put out some kind of, we talk about being, for, for the general public to see these kinds of stats? This affordability of water in Port Coburn, I really think it's important for people to see it and be able to, to, to judge it and see what, in the comparisons. I just wondered if there's any possibility that we perhaps could put it out on our website, under FYI, for your information. This is what we want you to compare to see how things are going. We need to get the info out to people.
Darlene, or Darlene. Darlene, I'll, I'll answer that for you. And yes, Counselor, as of tomorrow, we will be directing staff to get this information out.
Perfect.
We'll go through Michelle's office to work with, with our staff here, and, and get that information out, and probably do a good press release.
Great.
With regards to this. Darlene?
And, and just through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kalyev. Last year, yeah, 2018 water budget, I believe, we actually had a display in the front lobby. It was the Price is Right?
Yes.
And we actually have what the, the tags of what the price of what you could buy for the equivalent cost of 1,000, 1,000 liters of, of tap water. So yeah, that's definitely something we'd like to do, is to get, get the information out there. So yeah, that's definitely something we can work on.
I, I remember your display. It was great. But I just think if we get this out even more on immediate release, and that, there's a lot of people that don't get here, and they need to see this.
Drink water. It's cheaper than beer.
Doesn't taste as good.
Wine too.
So you all set, Counselor? Okay, so second round, I had Counselor Bruno, then Counselor Borger.
Thank you, Bishop. Through you to Chris. Chris, specifically now with this leak detection program, the ability to do it in 20 days a month by the time we get it rolling, when you identify those leaks, and I'm thinking particularly laterals, whether it be from the main to the curb stop predominantly, can you ensure that our current projected paving and concrete sidewalk repair be either delayed, or that the, the analysis, if it picks up, like, if you're going to redo the East Village because of all the work done there, I wouldn't mind these Village being done first with the leak detection program in case there's lateral leaks there before you were going to resurface, rather than resurface or re-sidewalk, and then find a lateral leak. And that bleeds through whatever year 2019 paving and concrete repairs are.
Chris?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruno. That's definitely what we were entertaining. The logistics and all of that sorting it out is between my staff and myself. But we have a number of areas. We also have our regular resurfacing program. So those will all be taken into consideration in what comes first and how we react to it.
Okay, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor Borger?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Darlene or Peter. This is mentioned several times in the report, over again, and so I just want a little bit more clarity on it. It says that no debt is forecasted to be used to fund capital expenditures. However, should the downtown CIP be completed the next decade, this financial plan ensures that debenture reserves will be in place to permit the water, wastewater portion of the CIP to be debentured. So what, I, I had trouble kind of understanding what that means.
Peter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the fact that we're accumulating $70,000 a year in the budget to go into the debt reserve, again, it all depends on, on what projects may come up that's, that's over and above the, the normal replacement. So if there's, whether it's the downtown CIP, could be another project that may come up in the, in the near future that will anticipate doing a larger project and a debenture or a debt issuance for, for that particular one. So we can, at this point, with the $70,000 that's in the budget right now, that's going into the debt reserve, so we have $70,000 every year, which means we can borrow anywhere from $1 million to probably $1.2 million, depending on the interest rate and the length of time of the debt. And that $70,000 will be the repayment, annual repayment for principal and interest for that particular debt. So that could be a, you know, a new service that goes in. It could be something that's, that's found that, that staff find a major water main break, and they look at the, the piping, and we'd have to do a whole replacement. All depends on the circumstances. Those are the types of things that you really can't determine in a, in a, in a forecast and water financial plan. But if it needs to be, then we do have some funds available in order to do that. And one of the examples was the downtown CIP. But there may be other projects that may come up over time that we may have to dump in, jump into. With that said, what also, could also happen is if you have, let's say, more than one project, that's over and above the one project, that's over and above the 1 million dollars that you need and the 70,000 dollars to cover, we still have room within the current capital contributions, annual contributions for the water plan, that you could debenture a million, another million dollars, and you're only using 70,000 dollars of the 750,000 dollars annual amount that you have for replacement. So, so depending on the type of project and the length of the, or the size of the project, we could, we could, this plan could still sustain that.
And also, councillor, whatever may come down from higher-tiered levels of government, programs that come out, that all of a sudden, we've got some money that we can apply for. So with our money, their money, we can actually proceed with projects. So as Peter said, we may not have to borrow the whole amount, let's say, a 6 million dollar project, we may only have to worry about 2 million of that, or 3 million of that. So the upper levels contribute so much, then we contribute the other. So our, our cost is less for an entire project. So, okay, yeah?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Darlene, or actually, whomever can answer this one, too. So as I was going through the report, I know that, I understand this is supposed to be a financial plan, but since we're on water, I came across some of the items in the report, not items, sorry, the different types of water main material that exists currently. And one really caught my eye, and I'm sure you, you may know which one. Asbestos cement. Can someone explain to me what, okay, with the safety aspect, like, is this safe? And it's, and are, and if it's, if it is, and, or if potentially not, is this going to be like a top priority, like one of the ones, the first type of water mains that we get out and fix?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Borger. AC or asbestos cement piping was very common in North America for a period of probably 30 or 35 years or more. It does not possess or cause a health problem, because it's unlike airborne asbestos that everybody's concerned about, this is nothing of that. So it has never been deemed by the ministry or anybody else, none of the government agencies, so it's not a health concern.
Councillor Bodnar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Peter, I guess, just to pick up on, on councillor Wells's locked-in scenario. A future council, tell me if I'm wrong, could take, right now, you're talking about that, those mature debentures going into it, a future council, keeping it in the water, could choose to use that to reduce water rates or something else, and am I right or wrong?
Peter?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, council can choose to do whatever they believe is, is right at the time. So whether it's in reducing the amount of money that we're putting into the debt reserve, or putting money into capital, or reducing operating expenses, it wouldn't, in my opinion, it wouldn't be of the best recommendation to come from councils, knowing that the legislation is required to make the system sustainable going into the future and full-cost recovery of the plan. And that's what this plan does, is provide that. So I would think that going forward, yes, council can do that. I wouldn't advise that future councils do that, because you're, you may be putting the, the plan at, at risk. And we would, we would have to explain that to council, but ultimately, it would be council's decision in the end, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I agree, absolutely, totally, but I just wanted to bring that out there, that locked in is as good as it can, but there's a lot of keys out there, so, you know, someone could open it up, so, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? Any further comments from staff? Gentlemen in the front row. Guys have any comments or anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that, we do have a mover and a seconder, we have councillors Kalyaev and Bodnar that moved this. I'll call the question, all those in favor. It's carried unanimously. Thank you again, staff. We have one bylaw for consideration, bylaw 66683219, being a bylaw to adopt, ratify, and confirm the proceedings for the Council of the Corporation of the City of Port Coburn at its special meeting of April the 15th, 2019. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Bruno, councillor Bagu, any questions? All those in favor? That's carried. Councillor Danch?
I move to adjourn your honor.
Well, that's a worship and honor as a judge, but that's okay.
He missed that.
Yeah, he missed that class. Seconder to that, councillor Wells, any questions? That's carried. Good job, guys. This is super stuff. Super stuff.
I'm so impressed, you guys get it up so fast.